I hear you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call and order the regular scheduled meeting of the Apex Town Council. And, um... Let me see. Thank you, John. Could you close the door for us? Either in or out. Bring them in. Um, August 21st, 2018. And I'd like to recognize Matt Mitchell. He is the pastor at Potter's Hand. He will bring our invocation for us tonight. Pastor Mitchell?
Well, we pray. I just want to thank you all for what you do for our city. On behalf of many people, we are grateful for your leadership. Thank you, guys. God bless you. Let's pray together. Lord, we thank you for this time. We thank you for the freedoms we enjoy. You have blessed us in so many ways. Now, we thank you for this amazing city. We pray for wisdom tonight. Pray for unity. Pray that you would bless us with clarity so that we be about your agenda. Thank you so much for these selfless leaders. The work they do that's seen, the work they do that is unseen, I pray that you would reward them and bless them. We ask this now in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome tonight. Before we get started, I'd like to call your attention to a couple of things. Number one is if you'd like to follow along tonight, there is a stapled printed agenda out on the podium. Hopefully, you grabbed one. It looks like this. If you didn't, feel free to go out and get it. I don't mind if you get up and walk out and go get it on your own. A second thing is there was yellow sheets that looks like this. So if you intend to speak during a public hearing tonight or a public forum, you need to familiarize yourself with the guidelines. These are on the yellow sheet. And the other yellow is the signup sheet over here. So if you intend to speak in a public forum or public hearing, find the appropriate sheet, because as you can see, there are about nine, and sign your name and address, and then we will call you at the appropriate time. All right, this time, it's my pleasure to read the proclamation that we have for the second year. This is the Human Trafficking Awareness Week 2018, and I will present it shortly. Let me read it first. Whereas human trafficking is the recruiting, harboring, transportation, provisioning, or obtaining of a person for labor or services through the use of force, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of forced labor or sexual servitude; and whereas human trafficking is a $32 billion a year global criminal enterprise and is a crime as well as a civil and human rights violation; and whereas the United States government estimates that 600,000 to 800,000 individuals are trafficked across international borders each year and exploited through forced labor and forced commercial sexual activity; and whereas the U.S. is a major destination country for international trafficking victims as approximately 14,000 to 17,000 people are trafficked into the country each year, these numbers do not include domestically trafficked children and adults; and whereas human trafficking is a crime that impacts North Carolina; and whereas FBI analysts have stated that close to 25% of international trafficking victims end up in the southeast, including North Carolina; and whereas North Carolina passed anti-trafficking legislation in 2006 and '07; and whereas more awareness and education is crucial to eradicating human trafficking in our community, state, and nation; and whereas Human Trafficking Awareness Day is observed annually in municipalities across the country in order to educate the public and raise awareness about human trafficking; and whereas the town of Apex has a strong commitment to social justice; and whereas multiple governments, nonprofit, and faith-based organizations, as well as concerned individual citizens of Apex currently provide leadership, philanthropy, advocacy, and dedication to end human trafficking in the town of Apex in North Carolina. Now therefore, I, Lance Olive, Mayor of the town of Apex, do hereby proclaim September 30th through October 6th, 2018, as Human Trafficking Awareness Week in the town of Apex, and urge the residents of Apex to support efforts and take action to end human trafficking. And I'll sign my name at the bottom. And I'd like to invite Nicole Bernard to come up here and receive this. And I don't know, Whitney, would you come too? Because I think it would probably be fitting. Come on up. Whitney Ludlow. Yeah, yeah, come on. That's fine. Bring your entourage. Come on up here. Looks like the chief's going to take a picture. Yeah. I want to find a place, yeah. Okay, great. And I'd like to thank...so Nicole Bernard and Whitney Ludlow met with the chief, and some of the police officers have been working with them. I came in and we wanted to do a human trafficking education event or item or something. We were brainstorming what could we do. We decided last year to do an education week, and we did that week with different events each night every year to help people learn. The reason it's important is citizens can see things and call in tips to the police department. Police department can then follow up on the tips. Tips is...are one of the main sources of identifying and finding crime and put the stop to it. And whether, you know, when you walk through your town or you drive through your town and it feels like this is the perfect place, well, it certainly should, but there's always places for criminals to hide out. And as you know, in 2016, we did have one organization that our police department shut down for illegal massages. Now, that business has not come back, and we are keeping an eye out. We are vigilant to make sure. And all these people up here have been doing so, and I just want to give them a round of applause. I'm just presenting this to Nicole as the Director of SHIELD NC, the organization that was recently founded to help eradicate this in the state. Nicole, what do you want to say a few things?
Thank you so much. We're really thrilled that Apex is being proactive on this issue. So thank you for all of the police officers who are on the front line. We just want to elevate the good work that they're doing. So thank you so much. And thank you, Mayor Olive, for taking the initiative to do this and make this a forefront issue.
Great. Lastly, so the week, September 30th through October 6th, is not just something to put on the calendar and remember. There will be things happening that week, so please follow. I think the police department will announce at least the start of the event, and I know online there will be social media talking about what will happen each day. So if you or anybody you know is interested, please follow along and find those events and sign up and attend them. All right, thank you. So at this time, we move to Consent Agenda. This is when we typically enact many things with one single motion and vote. Consent Agenda is considered to be non-controversial, and however, if any council member wishes to pull something, they certainly may if we want to add it to the agenda for later discussion. With that said, before I call for a motion, I will call your attention to the add-on agenda item that the town attorney has made available and the town clerk has made available. This is to advertise of the item that is currently listed as Public Hearing Number Six, which will not be heard tonight. So if you're here for Public Hearing Number Six, it will not be heard tonight, and the formal advertisement of that will happen very shortly with the passing of the Consent Agenda. So with that, my recommendation, unless there's some other change, would be to call for a motion of approval with the add-on.
Motion to approve? Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, to approve the consent with the add-on. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. That concludes Consent Agenda, and if you're following along, that skips us all the way to the middle of page four where we approve the regular meeting agenda tonight. As I mentioned, Public Hearing Number Six will not be heard tonight, so I will ask if there are no other changes for the agenda that we approved. The agenda as printed with Public Hearing Number Six omitted. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, we have set the agenda. We now move to public forum. I didn't have a joke ready, so I'll just have to wait. Sorry, Donna. There's no one listed? All right, if there's no one listed, then I'll open the public forum and close the public forum. All right, thank you. We'll now move into public hearings. Public Hearing Number One, this is the Possible Land Use Map Amendments and Conditional Zoning Application 18CZ20 for the Lufkin Leased Fee LLC, and Shelley Mayo is presenting tonight. Ms. Mayo?
Good evening. Let me get it out. There we go. The rezoning and land use map amendment before you is located at 3050 Lufkin Road. That's on the eastern side of town where the 10-10 Road and US-1 interchange are. The site consists of about...of one parcel totaling about 3.3 acres. It's located between Sheets and Summit Church and just down the road from Lufkin Middle School. The lot shares a stormwater pond and a driveway point with Sheets. Most of the property is wooded, but a portion of the 160-foot Duke Energy easement is located on the southeastern corner of the property. The 2030 land use map currently designates this parcel as Commercial Services, just like the parcels to the northeast and west. The applicant's requesting a 2030 land use map amendment to industrial employment. The property is currently zoned, plan commercial conditional use, and the applicant's requesting a change to Tech Flex conditional zoning. This would be consistent with the proposed land use map amendment. The applicant's proposed a number of uses. There's far too many of them for me to want to read them all out to you at one time. I don't think you want to hear me do that either. So I'm just going to give you the highlights, just a couple to give you a feel for what they all are. They are, however, listed in full on page two of your staff report. Repair and maintenance general, building supplies wholesale. Just want to point out there's a typo on my staff report. The word wholesale is missing. My apologies. Warehousing, medical or dental office or clinic, convenience store, gas sales, vehicle inspection center, and pet services. During review, planning staff actually recommended that 20 uses be removed from the use list. The applicant agreed with us and removed 18 of them. The only two that they left on there were building supplies wholesale and warehousing. The applicant's also agreed to seven conditions. These are in the bottom half of your...of page two of your staff report. The first two are very consistent with our standard architectural conditions for non-residential buildings. The last five are more specific to this project, so I'll read those instead of all of them. The exterior building facades visible from a public right-of-way shall have more than one material color. Service bays shall be located at the rear of the structure. The building facade facing Lufkin Road and 10-10 Road shall consist of at least 50% class. The building shall use materials, colors, and architectural elements similar to the building at 4,000 Lufkin Road. That would be Sheets, just to clarify. And a cross-access easement shall be provided for the adjacent property to the northeast. That's also regarding Sheets. Planning Board heard this petition at their August 13th meeting. With a vote of six to one, they recommended approval with the condition that the following uses be removed: daycare facility, drop-in or short-term daycare, broadcasting station, and radio and television recording studio. The applicant did agree to remove those uses from the petition, but we didn't receive the revised use list in time to put that in your staff report and your application packet. Planning staff does not recommend amending the 2030 land use map since it's not an area identified by Advance Apex to be changed. We believe that the large trucks associated with the more industrial uses should not intermingle with passenger cars that use the shared driveway with Sheets. Planning's concerned that it poses a safety risk. We're especially concerned about this because of the anticipated widening of 10-10 Road. Based on the preliminary plans for the widening, it appears that the Sheets driveway onto 10-10, so the one that's right here...
You said on the 10-10?
Closest to 10-10. I'm sorry. I meant this one, actually, right here. My apologies. I was pointing at the wrong one. May actually need to be removed. If that happens, the only access for all of the traffic generated by both developments for this one and for that one would be the shared driveway right here on this parcel. If the 2030 land use map amendment is approved, Planning recommends approval of the rezoning with additional conditions in order to make the permitted land uses a little bit more compatible with the surrounding land uses. We recommend removing the following uses, the four that Planning Board recommended and that the applicant has agreed to. In addition, youth or day camps, entertainment indoors, building supplies wholesale, and warehousing. The applicant has agreed to remove youth or day camps and entertainment indoors. They have not agreed to remove building supplies wholesale or warehousing. We'd also like to see the following condition added: that contractor's office and storage yard shall not be permitted to have any outside storage at this location, but shall be permitted to have outside parking for contractor's vehicles located in the rear of the building. That is provided the contractor's vehicles are standard-sized, road-ready, and licensed vehicles which fit easily into standard parking spaces. No trailers, oversized vehicles, or construction equipment may be parked outdoors on site. We recommend removing those last two uses because they're not really in keeping with the other uses along Lufkin Road, which tend to cater more to the public. The other uses on this application do cater...do either cater to the general public or more office-style uses, which we feel are more compatible with what's out there. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The applicant is also here to answer any questions.
All right, questions for Shelley?
So... So I'm a bit confused. Planning staff is recommending the approval with the removal of...
So it's kind of a two-fold thing. We don't want to see the land use map changed, partly because we are in the middle of the Advance Apex update, and so nobody's gotten to see that yet, and since we anticipate that coming probably in December-ish, we feel that an amendment at this time isn't quite right. But also because it's not been identified in our preliminary work from Advance Apex to show that this is an area that should be changed. However, if the land use map amendment is approved, we have a recommendation that we could recommend that... Let me back up. If the land use map amendment is approved, then we recommend approval with the conditions that those two uses, building supply wholesale and warehousing, be removed, and that the condition I read to you for the contractor's office and storage yard be added. That long condition is in your staff report in the Planning Department recommendation portion. I think it's page three.
Let me make sure. While you have the floor, do you have any other questions or...
I do. What's the...so the difference between current zoning on the map and what's being asked to be rezoned to? What are the major differences in the...because to me, I'm out studied every day, but they're...they seem kind of similar.
There are some similarities. There are some additional uses that are being added, primarily including that building supplies wholesale, contractor's office and storage yard. They wouldn't be able to do...under the existing zoning, they wouldn't be able to do a laboratory for industrial research, warehousing, woodworking, or cabinet making, or wholesaling. There are...they also wouldn't be allowed to do a micro-distillery there, and... Those are kind of the biggest...those are the biggest differences.
And Shelley, why would, like, the warehousing...is the thought not wanting stuff stored outside on shelves and covers? Is that what that...
So the warehousing is a separate use from the contractor's office and storage yard. Contractor's offices and storage yards can sometimes be...it can be a little bit messy-looking and can be kind of aesthetically unattractive, and since this is a pretty prominent area as far as people drive past this all the time, we'd really prefer to keep the stuff that's outside in, if at all possible, if a contractor's office locates there. We're just primarily trying to prevent the...or protect the viewshed, the aesthetics of the area. And then the warehousing is separate. Warehousing would be everything internal. The reason that we have some concerns about warehousing is primarily the bigger trucks that are going to be associated with warehousing. It's also not a front-facing kind of thing. Typically speaking, warehousing just stores stuff, and that's actually part of the definition, is it stores things and then either sells them to third parties or acts as a storage place for the dispersal of things after they've been sold. So it doesn't interact as well with the neighbors, in our opinion. It doesn't have that kind of public...I had a great phrase for it a minute ago. Catering. It doesn't cater to the public. And then we're concerned because there's really big trucks that normally come out of warehouses, and just depending on the warehouse, sometimes those come relatively infrequently, but sometimes there's a whole bunch of them throughout the day. And if you've only got one driveway here and you've got, you know, moms and dads picking up and dropping off and, oh, hey, I need gas, and they're pulling in here and they're having to use the same entrance as the bigger 18-wheelers, or maybe some of the slightly smaller than that but still pretty big trucks, that can cause some safety concerns. And that...those are really our two primary concerns with that particular use. Those are the same concerns that we have with building supplies wholesale.
Are there other possibilities for ingress and egress here?
Not really, no. There's this buffered stream here that...partly because of how Summit Church developed, but partly because of the stream itself, there's no way to cross that really, not without some severe grading challenges. There's this BMP here, which is actually...was built for Sheets and is designed to be shared between the two of them, so that limits where that access can go. There's a non-residential subdivision down here where the road stops right here, so there's not really good access point there. I suppose technically it could be possible for, you know, this to recombine down into here, and you might get access through the other site. Very, very unlikely, though. And I think this site is actually under development, and there's no stubouts to that. So this is really the only spot that this property has to connect.
On page... Four of nine, it says on the bottom, that the petition information lists uses, proposed uses, and studio for art, tailor shop, these kind of things. And I'm a little confused about the discussion about the warehousing and these uses, and what's the combination of allowed uses versus proposed uses?
The...all the uses that are proposed are technically allowed within the Tech Flex zoning district. So we went through with the applicant and made sure that they weren't proposing anything that wouldn't normally be allowed under the UDO. The ones that we're recommending that they remove are just the...those two, the warehousing and the building supplies general. And then they have already been willing to remove six. So that's the youth or day camp, the broadcasting station, radio recording studio, entertainment indoor, daycare, and then drop-off for short-term daycare.
And the proposed uses, are they legally bound to those uses, or is that just to give a guess about?
No. They are only...if this rezoning is approved, they are only allowed to use the uses that are approved when you...that are listed in here and left over out of those six that we removed. So only the ones that are listed in your staff report, essentially.
I was looking at you. So there's allowed uses and there's proposed uses in a different section in the petition information.
Okay.
Nine of 37. I'm confused.
My apologies. I didn't...I thought you were talking about the staff report. I did not realize we were on the other.
Or is that just a...
It's essentially the same list. It's just that I copied it into my staff report.
Those are extra from the page before?
Yes. All right, I misunderstood.
Continuation of four of nine.
Yes. One through six on the...on the second page, or the second list of proposed uses is the same.
Okay, sorry. I misunderstood.
No, I just didn't understand.
So my other question was...so I've seen some maps of the 10-10 widening, and it's...it looks dramatically different, and I don't know what that means for Sheets. I don't know what that means for this property and...yeah, so, okay. Can you explain what the future looks like for...if this is followed, I guess, and how this would play into the current Sheets location as well as this?
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, I was actually going to ask.
So I spoke with the engineers who are working with Sheets, and they have told me that they believe they can redesign the site using their existing property. They will only have the access that's the shared access, likely, but they said that they could re...they will not have anything that's there currently. It'll be a complete rebuild.
Okay, so that...okay, so there will not be an entrance for the Sheets on the widened 10-10?
That's the plan, yes.
That's the plan.
To not have one.
We don't have for sure, but we...
It's not finalized, but currently, that's what it looks like.
Okay.
Shelley, can you point out that piece that we're talking about here? Is that...
So this is Sheets. This orange block is their main building. This is their canopy. This is the site that we're talking about right now.
And what is the road east of that?
This right here?
Oh, the other one.
Sorry. This? This is Lufkin.
The other way. Other way.
Reliant.
Ah, yes. Sorry.
There. So is it possible that Sheets will have two entrances there from both sides?
No, Sheets doesn't have frontage on Reliant. There's actually a parcel in between. These orange blocks here are buildings that DOT assumes are going to be wiped out or otherwise heavily impacted. So wherever you see one of these orange blocks, there's an existing building.
By this plan and your discussion about the entrance, what is currently used maybe intermittently for Sheets is going to be...
Their main access.
That's...I guess that heightens the potential concern about safety.
Potential conflict, yeah.
Is it okay if I just explain where DOT's at with the 10-10 widening?
Please do.
Shannon's had way more conversations.
Okay, so the graphic that you're looking at was for the last public meeting. So this is not a final design, and CDOT is still working on revisions. Since that public meeting, they have had a meeting with Sheets there, trying to tighten up what you're seeing here, but to give Sheets enough room to maintain some building on the site which would be rebuilt. And the primary access would be through the shared access point that we've been discussing, and that's why it was important to make sure that was included as a zoning condition. We expect to see the next revision to the 10-10 plan probably late September, early October.
Any other questions from council? All right, not hearing any. Let me see if the applicant would like to speak in their own behalf.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for your time. Trying to keep this short, but just to touch on a few of the points that Shelley brought up.
Just a quick introduction. Your name?
Oh, sorry. My name is Bill Marlowe. I'm here on behalf of Lufkin Leased Fee. So we don't feel that we're creating an outlier in use here. As you showed earlier on that zoning map, a lot of the properties to the south are zoned already either for light industrial or Tech Flex. We actually chose the Tech Flex zoning because we thought it was, you know, probably brought less of those less desirable uses to the area. Light industrial tends to offer a lot more, you know, heavy or lighter industrial uses rather than Tech Flex, which is more focused on, you know, companies like software developers like we've been discussing with and other, you know, uses such as that. Not to say that, you know, building supplies or any of those other uses aren't potentially in the cards, but we just felt like this would be a better use considering the zoning in the area, and it also kind of provides more of a buffer to that light industrial area to the south. As far as like the truck traffic and the size of the trucks that we were concerned about, a building this size won't typically generate much traffic volume-wise, and as far as the size of the trucks, it's a small building, so probably three to four bays maximum. I can't imagine we'd get very many, you know, 60-foot semi-trailers in there to begin with. That's also not to mention the truck court that we have currently designed on the site plan is only 105 feet deep, which isn't really conducive to big trucks. We do, you know, typically 120, 130 feet deep for, you know, heavier industrial uses with, you know, a lot of semi-trailer traffic that comes there. And then the last concern that we were...really didn't want to add to the conditions was that contractor yard. We feel that we've, you know, taken a lot of permitted uses off of the list to begin with, and, you know, eliminating the contractor yard would also make it pretty difficult to bring that sort of use to this property. I am...in talking with Shelley, she mentioned that it's already a part of the UDO, that it's required, that any, you know, storage must be in the back of the property. Is it "and" or "or" fenced in and not visible from public right-of-way?
It would have to be fenced in and screened with evergreen screens, so it's not visible.
Yeah, so we don't think that that would cause NISOR, you know, it wouldn't be visible from public right-of-way, and we don't think that that'd be, you know, cause too much of NISOR, as I mentioned. But yeah, the main reason for me being here is just to get up here and answer any questions that you guys might have, and kind of raise our concerns about the last few conditions that we were asked to remove. that we were asked to remove.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Marlowe?
Yeah, I have one. So I noticed in the neighborhood report, there was, nobody showed up. And yet, it's right next to a church, and so I was wondering, your interactions with the church, and do they know about all these uses? And have they expressed any concerns or anything that's maybe not written down that we have already had to read?
Yeah, so I actually spoke to them today. Nobody showed up to the neighborhood meeting. I was actually surprised that nobody from the church should have come. But I spoke to a representative of the church today who's actually working on a similar project with them. And they said that they did not have any concerns with any uses. I brought up, you know, Micro Brewery and, you know, made some specific mentions of concerns that they might have. And they said, no, they don't think the church would have an issue with any of the uses there. You know, it's not going to be a club or a bar, which might be a concern, but, so, short answer to that.
All right, I don't hear any other questions, Mr. Marlowe, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And this time I'd like to open the public hearing, referring to the sign-in sheet. I see no one signed up, so I'll consequently close the public hearing and further matter back to council for a motion or a discussion leading to a motion.
I am concerned about, you know, having the two additional uses in there that the planning staff has asked for that to be removed, the building supply and the warehousing. You're putting 18-wheelers really close to or in the same area as that gas station along with a church that has a daycare that's in use daily and an elementary school there. So that's, that's a pretty big concern for me. They're going to be turning right out into traffic and I've seen a lot of accidents happen. So I'm not likely to say yes to something that's got those two conditions in it.
I'll go next. I think for me at this time, based on not knowing what NCODOT is going to do, unfortunately, and consistent with the staff's serious concerns over transportation and the public's transportation concerns in this town, I just don't think that I'm going to be able to support this project at this time.
Shelley, can I ask what the road improvements are going to be required with this site rezoning? Have we gotten to that point yet?
We have not. That would be something that we would look at with a minor site plan. The applicant presented us with a sketch plan, but it's not yet turned into site plan, so we don't have anything firm at this point.
Can I ask, can I ask a follow-up, not really follow-up, but a question about the traffic and how that would work? You guys recommended removing some of those with the big trucks. Is there precedent or anything out of your head as far as conditions that could allow that use but mitigate some of those time of day and those kind of issues possibly? Or is there a history of that anywhere that you know of?
We have seen conditions that are, that limit large truck traffic to certain times of the day, typically early in the morning before the peak time hours, so six or seven o'clock, or later in the day after peak time, so again, seven or eight o'clock. Sometimes those are effective, but it really depends on the business and how much they can mandate the type of truck traffic that's coming in. If it's, some businesses have that luxury and have the ability to say, "We will not allow you to come on to drop off anything in a large truck unless it's within these hours." But other businesses, if they're, say, contracting with, if they're being paid by their customers to store something at, say, a warehouse, for example, just to keep going with that same thing, they may not have that luxury. They may lose clients, or they may say, "Well, yeah, you can come in at nine o'clock." And then it starts to kind of, it starts to kind of fade away, and it's very difficult for us to enforce because we don't, it's not like we have cameras out there and we don't have the manpower to have people sitting outside making sure that there's only truck traffic coming in during those times of day. So we have to rely on reports and from residents from surrounding neighbors. You can do it, it will just be a difficult condition to enforce for staff.
Well, I don't, I don't think this is a bad idea to change this. DOT has their plans, and I'm sure this applicant is aware of those plans. And it looks like they've made, made adjustments accordingly on their site and what can be used. And if you go down Lufkin Road even further, you have Apex Tool Group, you have, you know, Tipper Tie down there, you have Reliant Avenue that turns into, what is that thing? It's Classic back there and exits out. There's a lot of big trucks that get moving down that road already. And I believe the church is empty most of the week except for Sunday. I could be wrong on that, but I just don't see much of it. It's right there close to the intersection. The truck's not going to be going, you know, 45, 55 miles an hour down Lufkin Road there, right there next to that, that stoplight. So with the improvements at that intersection, it seems that things are going to be flowing pretty well there. So I'm okay with this, with this change. With the recommend, recommended, the staff suggested that we're removing six of them and four of the six were removed. Is that correct?
We recommended removing eight, and six of the eight were removed.
Okay, and the other two, it sounds like in the UDO are required green screening and stuff that if, if things were outside?
No, the two, the one that you're thinking of, so we have a condition for contractor's office and storage yard that we've proposed, which is not a use that we're recommending be removed. We're fine with that as long as it has that condition on it. The only two uses that we're still recommending be removed are the contractor, or I'm sorry, the warehousing and the builder's supply.
Warehousing indoors.
It is.
So there wouldn't be any exterior?
Generally speaking, no.
Okay, and the building supply, the building supplies slash wholesale, is still indoors, correct?
Not typically. Think about an 84 lumber or like a lumber liquidators or one of those places. It's typically outdoors on big racks. They would also have to comply with some screening requirements. But in my experience, no matter how much screening you put around those, you still can see everything that goes on for the most part. Mostly you can get screening pretty well up to about six, maybe eight feet tall.
It would be behind the building, though, right?
That's not a condition of this person. Actually, I take it back. Yes, you were correct.
That was behind the building. Okay, where the Duke Energy easement is?
Yeah, so if we were to pretend, and this is only an illustration, that there's no guarantee that the building's right here, then anything else would be over in here.
Okay, along the Duke Energy easement and whatever that is.
They couldn't actually put it in the Duke Energy easement because Duke gets really upset when you have stuff in there easement.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion or more discussion?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Let's be clear on what we're, what your motion says. So the removal of the uses, which, which one do you?
As, as proposed by the applicant.
Okay, so as the applicant has proposed.
Correct.
So with six of the recommended and also without the second condition recommended by staff? From page three or four?
Contractor yard?
Yeah, the outdoor storage yard. Staff recommended contractor's office and storage yard not be outside. And the applicant did not agree to that.
Which if it was outside, we talked about the screening in that scenario, right?
So I want to be clear about your motion.
No, thank you for that. I feel there's proper UDOs in place to screen any outside storage that may happen on that site. So I'm okay with that.
As submitted by the applicant? Okay, I think I get where you're going. Can I? Yeah, I think you're, you're basically, if I could paraphrase, if you'll allow, as submitted by the applicant, which would be the six uses removed and without the condition that staff recommended for outside storage. So in other words, they would be able to store outside according to UDO, as the UDO allows. That is your motion.
Correct.
All right.
Can I ask a clarification question?
I see you. Yes.
To Shelley, what was the concern about wanting that condition, wanting that outdoor storage removed?
The back of this site is actually considerably lower than the front. And even if you're screening to the height of the existing materials, which is the way the UDO writes, or reads, rather, you're still going to, you have screening around it, but kind of imagine that you have things in a bowl. If you have the bowl at eye level, then the edges of the bowl keep you from seeing what's inside of it. If you lower the bowl, you can still see what's inside of it, even though the bowl still has walls that may be taller than the things inside of it.
So maybe to help make that clear, Shelley, can you show, I believe there's a north-south low area, perhaps even a creek, right?
Now, there's a stream right here.
Stream, yeah.
And then there's a sewer line here. And basically this whole corner back here, and essentially here is where you would actually have, here, you know what? Let me go up. No, that's still the better image. So essentially, right through here is where you would have the most ability to do storage yard. And this whole area is very low. So you would still be able to see it driving past down here. And that's not as much of the concern, so much as people coming the opposite direction might be able to see back through here and see through there. So it's kind of a, since it's down low, even though it'll be screened per the UDO and the UDO has good standards, you'll still be able to see it.
So your, your recommendation is to, one second, your recommendation is to not allow the outside storage because of that?
Correct. And I apologize if I didn't make that point.
You did.
Yeah, you did.
Can I ask, speak to that point quickly?
Um, hang on, because we're in deliberation. I want to see if the councilman has any other questions.
I do not have a question specifically, Shelley.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion on the table. We've talked it out. Is there a second for the motion?
Can I ask Mr. Moore your question if that's allowed?
Uh, yeah, um, one second. Let me just see if there's a second, because if there's not, then we don't need to talk about it anymore. At least not that part.
Before you go to the second, can we clarify that we're also including the associated land use map amendment?
Okay, yes, yes. And it associates, and it includes the land use map amendment. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there a second? Or anybody needs to hear more on the motion? Okay.
Can I, can I hear more from the applicant on that specific point that we just talked about, Shelley?
I want to hold that for a second, because I want to, if there's not a second, then I want to see if there's a different motion.
Can we do more discussion?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So, sorry, failing the second, that motion failed. So, but let's discuss some more and see where we go.
So, so my thoughts are, the outdoor storage part, I have less heartburn compared to the safety truck situation. So I have, I don't want to be there years later and like, be like, there's accidents and be like, darn, I should have, should not have voted for that back then. And unless that can kind of be mitigated, I'm at a hard time, kind of like the councilwoman over here, supporting it because of, I think it's, those trucks mixing with the gas station, especially when it's that one driveway now, likely with the new road. So that's kind of where I'm, unless, unless there can be some kind of convincing that there's mitigation of the safe, truck safety is occurring, I'm at a hard time supporting it.
Councilman?
So it's going to, well, it's really not kind of moot right now, but yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. And actually, that's, that's what we do. If it's moot, we just put it aside and move on, and we can, we can talk to Mr. Marlowe later if we need to. Is there an alternate motion?
I'm going to motion to, uh, motion to deny.
Okay.
In this present session.
All right.
Second.
Oh, second, okay, sorry. Motion and a second for denial, discussion?
Can you explain to me, we haven't done any denies like this. Can you explain to me the process of how to move forward possibly with?
You mean, assuming it fails?
Yes.
Assuming it fails, we can, so Mr. Marlowe would have recourse to come back to the planning department and ask, and maybe I'll just defer to Diane and, and ask what would be the recourse for a failed proposal?
As long as he changes the proposal so that there's a substantive change, which adding a, adding a condition, removing some uses could be considered that, they can apply for another rezoning.
So they don't have a delay if they can, if they make a substantive change?
Okay, it's not a forever pro closing of like this use.
Yeah, you're right. And, and part of this, and if we don't forget, part of this comes from planning's desire to finish the advanced Apex land use planning map. And maybe this, it sounds like this might be one where, well, if we deny this today, we're going to vote in just a moment, I think, but that this would be one where the advanced Apex might have a chance to finish, and then we can see what the, what good uses for this property are. I know personally I've been past it, and it does sit low. And you'll be able to see anything you put a fence around pretty well. I, I feel confident. And so I, I want to make sure that we think through it carefully before we jump into it. I know that that creek and, you know, the Summit Church, not maybe coincidentally, but named Summit, but it's substantially higher elevation than that property. It drops off really fast from that one building down to the creek. Not wanting to monologue too much. If there's, let me ask if there's any further discussion on the motion of denial?
Well, I guess I have a question. And if we deny the denial, then we could possibly continue this on to a further meeting, I would think, would be an alternative.
We could.
Give the applicant the opportunity to, to revise it in that manner, which shortens it and doesn't impact the cycle quite so much. Just a thought.
I think he could revise and resubmit almost immediately.
But then he has to go through the planning, planning board and write on the line again.
I would bet that if they've seen it recently, it would be able to go through a little quicker than the first pass. If there's a, if there's a revised application, does it? Well, let me, let's ask the question. Is it faster for the applicant if they receive a denial, they make a modification, they resubmit? Or if we continue an item for further discussion? But if we do that, I want to know what we're going to continue it for, what purpose? I'm sorry.
I guess to answer that question would depend on how far you wanted to continue it. If you were wanting to continue it so that it would align with the 10-10 plans moving further along, advanced Apex plan moving further along, it's, it's going to be about the same amount of time either way. And you have to continue it to a date certain, so you have to actually pick a date.
The applicant actually would like to say something real quick, if that's okay, sir.
Okay, since we're facing what feels like a possible denial, if you'd like to make a quick statement, feel free.
So just to speak to a couple of those points.
I want to, by the way, I want to make sure they're brief and relevant, okay?
Yes, so as far as the bowl and being able to see any outdoor storage, so this area, you're correct, it is a creek back here. It's also a conservation area. We can't develop in it. So those trees, all of that will stay. You won't be able to see anything from, I guess, this west side driving down, since, you know, you have those trees, you have the building. In addition to that, all of this area, basically from that tree line over, will all be grade level. So since we have the building here, we have parking up here, and we have a truck court back here, that'll all need to be the same elevation roughly, I mean, give or take five feet. So it'll kind of alleviate those concerns about the bowl and being able to see into any outdoor storage. If you guys would still like to add some extra measures, we can add a condition to, you know, fence above and beyond what the UDS says. As far as the warehousing and the truck concern, as I mentioned earlier, I really don't believe that a building of this size, a truck court of this size, you know, the service bays being as they will be, you know, three or four maximum, I can't imagine this would draw any heavy truck traffic. Yeah, I mean, it's a spec project. I could be wrong about that. But in my experience, that, you know, heavy, large trucks don't go to buildings of this size. I imagine it'd be more, you know, I don't know what they're called, Sprinter van-sized cars that are kind of operating in the truck court and doing, having most of the traffic there. And if, you know, 18-wheelers do come to the site, it's going to be a small use again, and it's going to be, you know, very light traffic throughout the day and throughout the week. I imagine a handful of trucks coming through, you know, every week. So I don't think those concerns, I understand those concerns, but I hope I can kind of alleviate some of those for you as, you know, in our experience and our plan for the property, we don't imagine, you know, uses like that going in here. So, and I think that was my last point. Oh, we'll take off the building supplies if you guys? Oh, we'll take off the building supplies if you guys are, if that changes anything.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
We'd like to take off the building supplies use if that changes anything.
So that was G?
Correct. We'd like to keep the warehousing, and we'd like to not include that condition that she's recommended. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Can I ask Shelley a clarification question? So you, you mentioned time of day prohibitions. What about total prohibitions of certain sized vehicles? Is there a, is there a precedent for that?
I'm unaware of any. I have seen sites designed in such a way so that it would be impossible for, say, an 18-wheeler to access them, just because of turning radii and things of that nature. So, and Diane, please, please hop in if I'm incorrect, but I'm unaware of any particular conditions in Apex that limit the size of vehicles that can access it. I suppose that it's possible, but it would have to be something that would apply to the site design as opposed to just a general, you know, you can't have 18-wheelers in your, in your business kind of thing. Because otherwise, you're, you're going to have the same issues that we discussed earlier with the time of day concerns, where unless a zoning compliance officer or a town staff member is there, we're never going to know if there's an 18-wheeler accessing the site. So it would have to be set up in such a way that, you know, the site is designed such that 18-wheelers cannot function on it. If you phrased it in that way, it might be more easily enforceable, because that's something that we can actually evaluate at site design level. But I will bow to Diane's greater experience on that one.
I don't think we've ever had anything like that, but there are certainly site design standards that we can look at, the turning radii that would prohibit, you know, based on the design, it would prohibit a large truck.
I mean, if you were to suggest something along those lines, I would recommend the phrasing be something along the lines that the site shall not be designed in such a way as to permit 18-wheelers or, et cetera, to access and use the site. Just as, as sample phrasing. I don't know if 18, I honestly, I am not familiar with the broad range of trucks. I have a little six-year-old friend who is, he's very interested in them, but I did not bring him tonight. So I cannot give you the names of all of those. So one concern would be listing the appropriate phrasing for how that needs to be interpreted for the different types of trucks. I don't have-
If you're interested in that, our, our transportation engineer can help us with that. That would be a reason to do a continuance.
So with that, with that on the table, we have a motion and a second for denial. We either need to vote on that motion, and if you believe there is a way that you want to either move to continuance or a motion to approve, then you can certainly vote no on the motion to deny. With that said, if there's no other discussion on the motion to deny, I'd like to call for the vote?
Well, I'd like to say one quick thing, and after listening to this, I personally think that building supplies and warehousing should get out. I don't think it's a great use for this property to begin with.
Okay.
And the second reason is, uh, you know, we're, we're looking for higher level jobs, and those two uses are very limited for higher level jobs in Apex.
All right.
I can see going with the denial, or we can go to a continuance. Matter of fact, I think the continuance is probably the best choice. So I'll probably vote against the denial, with the expectation we'll go to a continuance.
Okay. All right, well, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of denial indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, so the motion to deny fails, is there an alternate motion?
Pushing to continue the issue for a future meeting?
Uh, it has to be to a time.
You have to pick.
Oh, I have to pick a time, too?
So let's, we can, we can, well, let's talk about whether, what, first of all, before we pick a date, let's figure out what it is we want to solve, so that we have some action items. Otherwise, we're just continuing, I don't want to kick the can without having some action items of who's going to do what to move the item forward. So what would we want to solve?
With the expectation that the applicant takes a closer look at the items to be removed.
Okay. All right.
Or potential site conditions that facilitate, or discourage certain sized trucks, I guess.
Okay. All right. So we have, so we have a motion, so, hang on, so we have a motion to continue, and for the purposes of evaluating the use type and the traffic, or the types of trucks that could be in there. I, if, if I can use my privilege, I don't use very much, but I'd also like to say, and to continue coordinating with Shannon and staff on the advanced Apex plan, because I think if we focus on that, even if we don't publish the plan just yet, we might be able to figure out how to zero in on what would be reasonable uses for that, that planning can get behind, because I think that would be important. If, if everybody's okay, I'd like to throw that in the mix for the discussions. Now, with that said, for a date certain, we can do, I think four weeks would be sufficient, but I don't want to put words in your mouth. So, Mr. Marlowe, would, would four weeks feel sufficient to have discussions with staff and work with various people to figure out what are the issues that are sticking points and try to solve them?
I think so.
Okay. All right, Diane, is it, can you give us a, what is the date that's approximately a month from now?
September 18th.
Okay. So can I amend your motion with September 18?
Sure.
Okay, good. I think we have a valid motion now, if you don't object to me putting words in your mouth. Is there a second to continuing to September 18?
I'll second that.
Okay. I was hoping you might. All right, so we've got a motion to continue, motion to continue to September 18th and a second. Discussion on that motion?
I-
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
I would, I second what Bill was saying earlier, Councilman Jensen, about removing those two uses, because I do think those are the biggest hazards for this area, you know, traffic. Since they are sharing a driveway with Sheetz, Sheetz is going to be busy, 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 especially during peak times. So, you know, sharing that same driveway with potential 18-wheelers and, you know, to, to be fair, you don't know how often an 18-wheeler is going to be coming back and forth through there. So that's my concerns moving forward.
All right.
And I was going to say, similar to what you were saying, that if we just, the two things that you gentlemen mentioned tonight, they could change their mind and fix, and do those, and allay those concerns. So I think adding the advanced Apex and working with staff are the things that I was most concerned about. So otherwise, we could fix those two things, the C and, but they just decided not to.
Okay. All right. If there's no other discussion on the motion to continue, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. The continuation date is September 18th. And, uh, Mr. Marlowe, I hope you'll continue working with staff, take what you've heard today, and hopefully we'll be able to find a resolution for this. All right, thank you, sir. All right, that concludes public hearing number one. We now move to public hearing number two.
All right, so this is annexation petition 626, the Raver property on Whistling Quail Run. As you can see, it's located, um, kind of in the Friendship Belacasa area of town. And the property is on Whistling Quail. And this came through as a minor subdivision plan, and it has been approved as a minor subdivision plan. They need annexation in order to get their construction plan approval. Staff does recommend approval.
All right, very good. Is an applicant or representative of the applicant here and wish to speak? Do you wish to speak, Mr. Raver? Come on up.
Well, thank you for hearing our plea. But yeah, I'm just here to ask for the annexation blessing of the council, so that we can get these three properties. They have been divided, but we're just trying to get water and sewer, so that we stay within our covenants of one lot, one home built on 1.5 acres. And by having annexed water and sewer, that'll work out.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Raver. Just, did anybody have any questions for him?
I have questions.
Or for, okay, for Diane? Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
So, um, this, this property being split, it seems to me like, okay, so enabling it to go forward like this, it's going to be smaller lots than the typical, the rest of the neighbors in Whistling Quail, but yet later on, if they all want to change and be a higher density, it would be, it would kind of lock in that, too. So I was wondering, is it, is it part of the holistic plan to keep this neighborhood like this and have lots that are no, no bigger than the one acre or whatever, 1.5 acres?
No smaller.
No smaller, sorry. And, you know, I, I thought this was going to be a rezoning, and the neighbors would have a chance to weigh in and all that.
No, it was already zoned, rural residential, which allows the one acre density. And so they met all the requirements of the UDO, and so the minor subdivisions have already been approved. So they're requesting this annexation so they can get water and sewer.
Okay.
So Diane, they are, Whistling Quail is a neighborhood?
It was a Wake County subdivision. It was brought into Apex ETJ in 2006, and at that time, we had to zone it, and it was zoned to rural residential with the one acre lot.
Which is one house per one acre.
It's a, it's a, right, it's a, um, density calculation.
And so, um, they meet, so they meet rural residential zoning, and then the neighborhood covenants, they're in line with their neighborhood covenants as well, is that-
We do not enforce those, but my understanding is they've worked that out privately, but we don't, the town does not enforce private covenants.
Is there a stub, is this connecting to the stub?
What is that, Kraus Trail?
Or is this going to stay on Whistling Quail?
There's a stub that comes through there.
Um, it's, I believe it's a paper street leftover from the Wake County subdivision, though, so there's, right, maybe it's-
It's called Kraus.
Right here. I can see it. It's shown as a street, but it was never built with the Wake County subdivision. So it's available at a future time when someone wants to connect it, but I'm not sure when that would ever happen. But it's a stub street.
And if, um, were you done?
Go ahead.
And so if, if the neighbors wanted to change in the future, how would that work with those three properties versus the rest of them?
In terms of a rezoning?
Yeah.
Um, they would request a land use map amendment. Oh, we don't have a land use map. They'd request a land use map amendment and a rezoning, and if they wanted to rezone to plan unit development, it could potentially, if it got approved, it would potentially look like this neighborhood. If they got it rezoned just for medium density, it potentially would look more like this neighborhood. These older Wake County subdivisions, we typically, like Linden, the old, I forgot what the name of that one was previously, but Pricewood. The old Pricewood subdivision, we told them, you need to get all your neighbors together before you do this, and they did. And you all approved Linden, so if they all want to get together someday and not have their covenants renew, which is typically what happens with the older subdivisions, why they would come back and ask for a change, but-
And this change would not prevent that? They would just-
No, it wouldn't prevent that.
-read landowners, so they'd be dealing with-
No, there's not a reason, there's not a rezoning, they just, they're just trying to get water and sewer.
Yeah, just gives them-
Right, I'm saying, the future, our action today and having this be split would not change any kind of neutral?
No, it doesn't make it more likely or less likely.
Okay.
It's not really related.
Okay. All right. With that, I'll open the public hearing and call Jeff Babcock.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Babcock, and I live at 2721 Whistling Quail Run, which is two properties away from Mr. Raver. I am not here to object to this annexation. Mr. Raver and I came to an agreement where he would use best efforts to work with his developer to not seek to alter any of the plans in the future by submitting a rezoning request, or by challenging our covenants, or by seeking transfer of title to an adjoining high-density neighborhood, which is Belacasa. While this is strictly a gentleman's agreement between us, our only protection is to trust that once he sells the property to the developer, that the developer will follow through with his promise. We have been assailed by developers for many years. Our neighborhood is described as underutilized, a target and a trophy. One developer specifically wants to bulldoze my house personally. This is a real and present danger to our neighborhood. Make no mistake, when you approve this annexation, it will signal to developers and landowners that Whistling Quail Run is open for business. I have already been approached by two developers on this matter, and they have told me that based upon land prices, a developer would need to use high-density or commercial construction to make a decent margin. Therefore, I respectfully state that the only real protection that we have is this council, and I request that you provide such protection in any one of the following ways. Option one, you could allow access to town water and sewer for a fee for hardship reasons without annexation. Or option two, you could attach rider language to your approval stating that the town will not approve any future rezoning or plan change requests for any of the properties involved in part or in whole, even if the property's covenants or titles are changed or moved, unless the request is accompanied by documented unanimous approval by 100% of the residents of Whistling Quail. My research finds that none of these options are prohibited by any North Carolina law, nor precedent setting, as they have been enacted by other local townships in Wake County, either by policy or by exceptions to policy. The town of Apex, like other townships, can make situational exceptions to town policy or practice when it's appropriate. By enacting any of these measures, the town will be signaling that it is not open season at Whistling Quail Run. It will be protecting one of the county's last remaining rural residential gems from becoming just another high-density suburban area. I implore you to apply a protective measure of some nature to this annexation approval that shelters us from the inevitable cascade effects that will follow. Respectfully submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Babcock. With that, I'll close the public hearing and refer the matter back to council. And normally, I don't weigh into these, but this is not any different than anybody else who's technically in the ETJ that wants water and sewer. These lots are an acre and a half, and typically, when somebody wants water and sewer, and they want annexation, we historically always been okay with that, and we've tied the two together, say, if you want water and sewer, be part of the town. We'll be happy to bring you in and take care of you. And since there is water and sewer coming from the Belacasa side, it is available. And as we all know, at some point, wells go dry, septic tanks fail. So if somebody says they'd like fresh water, they'd like to have sewer, and I think it's good for the town of Apex to continue to provide that service.
So this is unique, Diane. So if we annex this, who provides police, fire, EMS protection?
The town provides all services.
To those three lots only?
Yes, we have this all over the place. We have ones that are even in, in more of a donut hole situation than this one. Anything you've ever annexed?
Yes.
Is, is town services?
There are dozens like this all over.
I appreciate that, that was just a valid question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, if you're annexed, you have access to all town services?
Yeah, I was just curious, because there's one way in and one way out of this neighborhood. I wonder how much of a, how come, it just seems like, and the lots are in the middle of the neighborhood, it just seems strange.
Everything that's in dark gray is serviced by the town of Apex. We have things that are all the way out to the county line, all the way out to the Cary, edge of Cary jurisdiction. We have little lots up here off Holt Road. It's people that have needed water and sewer. That is how we get annexation. We don't do involuntary annexations. It's almost impossible to do at this point in North Carolina. So as people would like water and sewer, and then all the other services come along with it, too. But typically, it's water and sewer is the reason that folks are willing to sign a voluntary petition to annex.
If I could just add something real quickly. Previously, and I don't want to give up too much information, it's unnecessary at this case and this, at this moment, but, um, there was some concern from some of the neighbors about a potential proposal that we were going to have before us. And so I was one of the people who did consent to talking to folks, and think the proposal that we see before us, and the previous one that was approved, could have been different. And I believe he did sort of listen to the concerns of the neighbors and came up with this, which it could have been a little bit different. I'll just leave that there. So I think this is sort of a little bit of a compromise, and I'm not going away for a while, I don't think so. Yeah, I'm happy to continue to be involved if necessary. I'll just kind of leave it.
And I, if I was going to signal something, it would be that I think that development would need to be- would need to be comprehensively done, not just in certain spots, so if there was a proposal that came later, that I think it'd be, um, it'd need to be all the neighbors agreeing, like, like you mentioned in Price Wood.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Raver. We now go to public hearing number three. This is, uh, the, the man airs property.
Okay.
Diane, sorry, I didn't introduce.
That's true. Um, this is located on North Salem Street. It's actually the part of North Salem Street that, um, is on the north side of 64 and when you make a right-hand turn, um, it's right at the ramp where you get off 64 on the North Salem Street. Um, this is a private residence and they need, um, town services, including water and sewer, so they've requested to annex. Oh, let me zoom in a little bit more. Um, actually, oh, it's across the street, sorry. I was thinking of the other one. This one, um, is located actually on the north side of, uh, North Salem Street and staff does recommend approval.
Okay, great. Questions for Diane?
What is the zoning of this?
It is, uh, that would be, uh, residential agricultural.
Which means what?
It's a, it's one per five acres, but it's, um, it's existing law of record, so it would not be required to be five acres.
So, if they go through a development proposal-
They'll have to rezone.
They'll have to rezone too.
They can have one house on that lot.
Why are they asking for rezoning, or for, uh, annexation?
Why? They need water and sewer.
Is it just water and sewer?
Yeah, I think there's a house on there.
There's a house, it's right next to Stock Building's block. All right, thank you, Diane. Is there an applicant here to speak? All right, no applicant, so we'll open the public hearing. Uh, no one has signed up, so I'll close the public hearing and refer the matter back to council.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion on the motion to approve? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. We now move to public hearing number four. This is, uh, the 2160 North Salem Street property.
Okay, so this is not very far away, we're in the same vicinity. Um, this property is currently economy exterminators. Um, my understanding is that they are eligible for a grant, um, because they have, um, tested negatively in their well and need to be on town water and sewer, so they're requesting that at this time and we do recommend approval.
All right, questions for Diane? Okay, is there an applicant? Just, okay.
Do, do we know any details about testing negatively in their well? It's contaminated, but I don't know what it is. So, they are, um, apparently eligible for a grant and they've been wait, they've been working on this a long time, they would like to be in it.
Right. Is that happening all over the place up there? Is that why we're seeing some of these, or?
I don't know. I don't know, David, if you know.
I heard about contamination, this is the first one. I mean, there, there's some areas that have just difficulty with getting water out of the well. Most of them have been related to that, uh, but these guys have been struggling with water and sewer, at least sewer too, for quite a long while. You know, they've, they've made overtures to the town for years, so I guess it's gotten to a point where they have no choice, or not much of a choice, anyway.
Multiple trips to the town? Do you use our bathrooms?
Well, no. (laughing). I've been asking about how they would sue the property and all that for quite, quite a little while.
All right, uh, at this point, I'll open the public hearing and, uh, seeing that no one has signed up to speak, I will close the public hearing and refer the matter to council for possible motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval discussion. All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. We now move to public hearing number five, which is the annexation of the Towns of Friendship Station developers. Looks like a teeny tiny little piece.
It is, so it's out again in the Friendship area and it is actually right-of-way that's currently on this single-family home. The developer has purchased it. It's actually a turnout for a future stub street to this property. Um, the street continues this way and it, and there's a turnout here and so they do need to annex it as part of their overall project that's already been annexed, but they just purchased it. They didn't have the ability to annex it till now.
Okay, thanks. Questions for Diane? Okay, is there an applicant? All right, uh, not seeing any applicant. I'll open the public hearing and no one has signed up, so I'll close the public hearing and refer the matter back to council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Skipping public hearing number six, we go to public hearing number seven. This is also annexation of the Guevara and Argueta, single-family home.
Okay. So, so we are up on North Salem Street, but south of US 64 this time, um, very near, um, the Thales Academy High School and this property is a single-family home and they are needing town water and sewer and so they've requested it and staff does recommend approval.
All right, questions for Diane?
Yeah, I have one question. This being the last one, I think we're doing, yeah.
Yep.
Can you hear a little more about the, is the town growth, is it, what, is this like kind of a constant stream that's happening or is, or is growth or whatever else happening causing these problems for these?
No, their wells are going dry or their septic systems are failing. That's 99% of what's going on when you have a single-family home wanting to annex.
And the wells going dry is normal course of, normal over time, or is it kind of like all this going on around it is?
We have very, very, very poor soils. We're in the Triassic Basin and it's, it doesn't perk for sewer. You have to dig really, really far for water. It's just not, it's not a question of if, but when. I've been told that by many, many engineers over the years, when they're gonna fail. It's not, it's not a question of if, it's a question of when.
Even over back 50 years, it just, we're on a ridge, we're between basins. You either have to go deep or you have to go often.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's the reality.
Yeah.
It's one perk of being in the town limits of town of Apex, you have, yeah, you have perk with a K, not a C, um, you get town water and sewer.
All right, so, so just for clarity, if the, the underlying zoning of this, bringing them into the town limits, if they were to redevelop this half-acre approximately, do they have to ask for a rezoning for that?
Uh, let's see, they are, they are currently zoned residential agricultural, which is again, the five acre, uh, one unit per five acres, so, um, but even, I forget what their size is, I don't think they're big enough even under RR, they would have to rezone.
Four, six.
They're only a half an acre, yeah, they would have to rezone to, in, to something like medium density or-
They would have to go through that process?
Yeah, yeah. They, they are allowed to have one house there, that's it.
Okay. Thanks, Diane. Um, applicant? No? All right, uh, at this time, I'll open the public hearing and no one's signed up, so I'll close the public hearing and refer the matter back to council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion, a couple of seconds, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. We now move to public hearing number eight for some possible transportation plan, thoroughfare and Collector Street Plan Map, uh, amendments. And, uh, let's see, Shannon Cox is presenting.
There are, um, multiple proposed amendments to the thoroughfare and Collector Street Plan Map tonight. I'll pause after each for questions, if that's okay. The first is related to the Apex Peakway Southeast Connector and associated roadways. Um, for reference, this is one of our two remaining gaps in the Peakway Loop between East Williams Street and Shiflin Road. A feasibility study report, uh, was began, begun in April 2017. Russell Dalton presented it to you at your last town council meeting. These amendments are related to that feasibility study report. They include slightly revising the planned alignment of the Apex Peakway, revising the alignment of James Street to turn slightly to the south and revising the alignment of Shiflin Road slightly to the west to create a four-leg intersection with the Peakway and slightly extending Energy Drive to connect with Markham Street. Um, remember that changes to residential streets would not be shown on this map because we're only showing collectors and thoroughfares. Um, this, uh, change was presented to the public at an open house in November of 2017. Uh, the police department, fire department, public works and transportation have all had a chance to review this and, uh, have no concerns and the planning board unanimously recommended approval at their last meeting. I'm happy to try and answer any questions.
All right, since we're gonna do these one at a time, let's ask questions on this one now while it's on the screen, if there are any.
Can I ask a question about the process? Like, doing each of these right now versus as part of the advanced Apex, is there a reason that they're, they're not happening at the same time?
Sure, so, um, when we do a feasibility study, we actually have more detailed information than even with advanced Apex. So, this feasibility study was begun, uh, prior to the advanced Apex process and, um, the purpose was to really help us plan for the roadway alignments and anticipated costs as we begin to think about programming, funding for this project.
Thanks. Good question, though.
When this goes into detail, I, I guess I'm looking at James coming in at, an angle to the Peakway here, um, and then there's a line of sight to the north. Is that taken into account? I just-
Um-
Strange-looking intersection to a degree.
So, you're looking at this intersection? Yes, so we do actually have a, a functional design for what you're seeing on the screen and there haven't been any concerns by our engineer or roadway designer about this intersection, so that was closely looked at.
Okay.
So, would we do a way with Shiflin Road between, what is that, Energy Drive and, uh, the old James Street?
Yes, so, um, Shiflin-
It would curve to the left to that tier.
Would curve here to create an intersection.
So, that stretch there to the, just to your right would be, it would go away?
Correct. Yeah, we could release the right-of-way or it could become a cul-de-sac for access to that area.
Okay, no other questions on the feasibility study for the Peakway and James? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Next, number two.
Okay, number two, um, it's related to Walden Road. Walden, um, is near Hume Olive, this is Hume Olive and Evans Road. The proposed amendment is to add a local connector to the transportation plan extending from, uh, existing Walden Road, um, and actually shown as a realignment of, of what's now a gravel road, Walden Road here, so that it would connect with Evans directly across from Madison Creek Drive. So, local connectors are typically built like a residential street and we usually only show them on the transportation plan where there's a critical connection to be made. Um, this, uh, was brought about by discussions of development in the area and again, our police, fire, public works and transportation have all supported this request and the planning board unanimously recommended approval.
Great. Questions on this one?
Is there any concern about the, uh, close proximity of Madison Creek Drive to, uh, the continuation of this?
So, um, actually, this, this helps the situation with Madison Creek Drive. Um, we would prefer that Walden connect to Evans directly across from Madison Creek, um, so this will help with turning movements and avoiding conflicts in this area.
Okay.
'Cause that stretch of Walden would be abandoned between Walden and Evans that we're moving from, right?
Typically, that's what happens.
Right. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, the final proposed amendment is for Keldor Lane. This is, um, along Davis Drive, north of Old Jenks Road. The proposed amendment is again to show, um, a new local connector on the, the plan extending from, um, Keldor Drive, which is under construction now in the Middleton Development, to connect to Davis Drive along Forget Me Not Road. Um, Forget Me Not Road is a private road, um, there's an access easement there, used for properties adjacent, adjacent to, um, the access easement. Um, the purpose of this recommendation is to prove, improve connectivity in the area should redevelopment occur. Um, I do want to mention that I did receive a phone call, um, between the close of business and the council meeting that I wasn't able to respond to, um, from one of the property owners who uses this access easement, concerned about not getting notice and also that this is not a public road, which we, we recognize it's not currently a public road. Um, notice was provided through the website and our posting in town hall, um, so there may be, um, somebody here to speak to those concerns.
Do you guys post this at the property with a sign too?
No, for a transportation plan amendment, it's posted online and it's posted in town hall.
Okay.
Um, again, this was reviewed by police, fire, public works and transportation. They all support this recommendation and it was unanimously recommended for approval by the planning board.
So, in that case, it currently is a private road and we have a, a plan like this, so, um, that would mean that only a new development, anything changed in there, that's when we would kind of, we suggest that they put the, or maybe force them to put the road in, in that kind of alignment in a new development when it's more of a comprehensive plan, right?
Right, so, um, we have many roads on our plans across private property. Um, most roads are built with redevelopment. There's, um, some cases, like the Peakway, for example, where the town would build the road and work to buy the right-of-way, um, or the state with a, a large project like 1010 or 55. Um, in this case, we have no programmed project to build this connection. It would happen when redevelopment occurs.
Can I back up one?
Sure.
To your previous, uh, Walden Road, um, that kind of dissects that property in a unique area, um, I don't know what the size of that is, but it seems like it would take away from the opportunities of that potential redevelopment of that property with that road, 'cause I'm imagining if, if somebody comes in and wants to develop that corner piece of property, part of that plan is gonna be building that road, correct?
Yes, so, um, unless it's an exempt site, we would require, um, right-of-way dedication if it's related to their project. Um, so, having a roadway on the plan can impact what they're able to do with the property, but, um, I know that for anything that would go there, we would all, also wanna make sure that it had safe ingress and egress and that's why this recommendation was made, to align it across from Madison Creek Drive.
Yeah, okay.
And that was the daycare that we saw a little while ago and that was one of the concerns, I think, several of the council had.
Right.
I just feel like we're taking away from the opportunities of that homeowner by putting a road in the middle of their, it takes away almost, um, a quarter, maybe, of their land space?
So, the parcel extends up here.
It goes up to the top?
Mm-hmm.
So, you have that, so that little corner piece south of the road probably is not usable, is too small. You got the road going- You got the road going through, which is the right-of-way, and then you have an extension off the back of the curb, probably, that's a little bit more right-of-way.
I don't want to presume what a site plan would look like, but an area like that may be able to be used for RCA or something along those lines. If we want to address the concern about turning movements and potential conflicts, that's really where the connection would have to go, because Madison Creek Drive is already in place.
So if I could speak to that, Councilman? This is not uncommon to find a road that comes in at an oblique angle and on a transportation plan show that when development happens, for safe ingress and egress, we would like for that road to be relocated so that there is as close to a 90-degree angle at the stop, which provides full visibility left and right, much safer. And it's not uncommon to do that on these type of properties. Also, what you find is that when development starts looking at an area, they'll often look at the whole picture, not the small picture. So you'll see three or four parcels start to be put together, and in the end, the relocation of that road is a net no change. You've just...actually, you've probably shortened the road by a few feet by going more direct, which means that the parcel on the south side becomes developable for other purposes. And at least by my personal opinion, this area, at least here, really...not that I'm asking for it, but really feels better suited for residential right there. That's my personal opinion. Certainly, down by the more major intersections, you can go more commercial use, but I think the more likely scenario is that you'll see eventually somebody will come in and want to do a single-family low-density kind of development around this area, and they'll parcel up as many as they can to get a big enough piece, and we just want them to realign the road when they do it. That would be...that would be the purpose of this, which is why I'm...I'm only the one that pointed it out at the time that I would be concerned with that road. I mean, I spent...not to tell too many tales, but I used to spend late nights watching meteor showers out there because it's so remote and dark, you know, and so I know that little location really well. But, you know, these days, when that development's happening around, I think that's what really needs to be there.
I know it pretty well, too.
Good. Yeah.
Did you see each other out there?
No, but I did run into Brad down there.
No. My time was more like 30 years ago. Anyway, I didn't mean to overtalk that one, but there you go.
Any other questions on any of these for Shannon? All right, thanks. Public forum. Open the public hearing, and no one signed up, so I will close the public hearing and ask the council if there is a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, planning staff, for all the hard work. That takes us through public hearing number eight, and guess what? There are no other items on our agenda tonight, and we don't have a closed session, so we have closed business from the dais, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.